Thank you for all coming to the November 10th City Council meeting. Would you please rise and pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you all for coming. So I've got a couple people that have signed up to speak. Road Clear Counselor Holt is not here tonight. She has an excused absence. She's on a work trip. Mark that down. So Sheriff, would you like to speak first?
Yes, I would. To show you that paper, what I keep getting on my...
Oh Sheriff, you dropped something.
Sheriff Waltman, 149 South Second Street, Crestwell. So, my issue, my concerns tonight to bring forth so we can have some answers is, I addressed in a meeting last month and received a callback from Vincent on pricing. I says, "Well, there's a pricing since this thing's gone. Second Street has gone so up and down. And nobody seems to communicate. We don't really know what's going on." Vincent was the one to get back in touch with me. And he said he wanted to sit down. I says, "Put your paperwork together on what's going on." I had a seriously busy work week or two. And I also said, "The neighbors and I wanted to get together and go through it." We have. And he gave us paperwork that stated you were going to be charging. And he kept circling and highlighting that it was a 20 percent... What's the word I'm looking?
Reduction.
Reduction. But he was charging us in his work $78 for linear foot. We have paperwork where you were charging us $4.55. Yep, it got spilt, so I can't quite pull it up as fast. So, Mayor, you said in a meeting we had before Vincent came on that we would be charged for $4 and...
$45.15.
$45.15 per linear foot. So my cost, when it's measured, if it is exactly 100, I have $4,500 and some odd dollars. That was mine. The paperwork I received from Vincent said I owed $7,800 and some change. Everybody's price went way up. We would like that clarified. It's... We have been vocal. We have been active. We have been... We've kept our paperwork unfortunate. Like I said, it got spilt, so it went. We want to know the truth. And we don't want to wait until you say it's done and now we'll pay you. We want to know where he got his numbers. And did you lie to us? Because you said it was, that was it. And that it might possibly go down because they bid low. So, we'd like to know.
Fair enough. I promise you I didn't lie to you.
Thank you.
Wayne, would you like to come up?
Sure.
Thanks, Sheriff. I do believe $45.15 was the original estimate. I don't have it in front of me, but that sounds good.
Yeah, the original was $45.15 on linear foot, the four inch sidewalk and long side corners. And like Sheriff had mentioned, with my particular property of 63 feet, the final estimate that I would have to pay was $2,844.45. With the new information that we just, that the neighborhood received, mine went up to $4,946, almost $5,000. So it's almost like a 50% increase. So I just basically needed some clarification. And the other thing I wanted to get some clarification on, whether or not this is true or whatever the situation is, has there been any allocation from funds from D Street thrown over to the airport? None whatsoever?
Not to my knowledge whatsoever, no. That would be normally if something like that would be happening, we'd have to have a meeting. We'd have to hold a public meeting. It would be reappraisalation of funds. Jim would be up here. It would be a whole deal that you couldn't...
So this is just a bad piece of gossip?
I don't think it's bad information, yes.
Okay, because I just thought that... Because what it seemed like, that reason, one thing that I'm thinking of, the reason why this had gone up. I know that when Wildish was out working out on D Street and that, and they quit for almost close to a month. And I was talking to one of the Wildish workers. I was, "Why aren't you guys finishing up?" He said something about the water table was off, but they did not realize that it was going to cost more to take care of that. And he said that the city was disagreeing with them. So I don't know what was taking place there. But I'm wondering, is that why this has gone up? That we're going to pay for whatever mistake the engineers did in regards to missing out on what the water table level was?
Well, normally we aren't supposed to speak at this time. But just so I can speak something, I would like to say I'm unaware of it doubling. Last I was told, last this council was aware of, it was the $45.15 per foot. And that, before Spencer had left, that is what we signed up to with Wildish. That's what the agreement was. That's how we used the tough fees to help lower the bills. Some of the other creative thinking that Jim had done with the numbers, it was $45.15. So this is news to me that it's $70, what Sheriff say, $78 a foot?
Yeah.
So what I can do for you is absolutely get with Vincent in the coming days or two. And we'll email you both and get down to exactly what information you do have, why you have it, and what has happened. Because I am unaware, I believe the council's unaware of anything changing from $45.15. It should not have. If anything, it might have been a hair smaller like we had anticipated. So that is news to me.
That's what's confusing to me is I thought, then somebody's on their own putting this together away from the rest of the council?
Yeah, no.
Can I try to...
Please.
So the information that we gave to Sheriff was from the public hearing that happened April 14th of last year. That's the information where it was the $78 per. If there were conversations after that that adjusted that, that was not in clear in the record. So I could be contributing to the misunderstanding because I gave the information out of the record that I was able to get ahold of, the resolution, the resolution order, the engineer's report, and then the reduction from the prebid cost. And then when the cost came back into the council from Wildish, that cost was adjusted again. And that was the 20% that Sheriff referred to. I did not find anything to the effect of what's being talked about now in the record. So I'll need to go back and see how that $45.15 was either documented or agreed upon.
Okay.
Do you have your paper right offhand to at least let him look at? But make sure you take it back?
Well, this is what we can do. I'm still willing to meet with the neighbors as I extend it. So we can bring all of our paperwork together and we can figure this out. That's not an issue.
Can you be there, Mayor?
I don't know if I'll be there, but I will make sure that if I can be, I will be. But I will, I'm on your side. Like you said, I'm pretty positive it was $45.15.
It was?
We were going to pay up to three inches or the sidewalk. We adjusted the sidewalk a little bit more, so we bought another foot, basically, to take it off of your plate. And almost everybody should have been under 5K. And when you look at the totality of the 50 to 60 different homes. So I don't want to put all on Vincent. Maybe he doesn't have the right information, so we'll all make sure and find it. I will promise you that we'll find the information and get it to you. And we'll make sure and get this number right. Because I don't think, doubling is not okay. There's no way that should have happened. I don't know how that could have happened without councils at least meeting to that. So to give you some peace, we will look into that. There's no way it could have doubled. There's no way it could have doubled. Something is wrong. Something's a foul. The information got put somewhere else. We will fix it. We'll figure it out and reach out.
Okay, I appreciate that because I get enough surprises in my life.
If I was you and I was Mike Robbery, I would feel the same way. So I want you to know, I put myself in your shoes and I don't want to have that either. I don't want, I need to know what my costs are going to be. And to have someone turn around and double on you, that's unacceptable.
Okay, well, thank you for hearing me out.
You bet. Thank you. I don't have anybody else that wants to speak, so we'll move on to the mayor's report. And thank you all for signing up and bringing that up to our attention. What I have tonight is committee openings. So anybody out there in the world wide web or on YouTube or here tonight, we have a couple openings on the Budget Committee, which for your sake only meets twice a year. You do get a say in the budget, which is nice. You can say, "No, you're crazy," or "Good job." So please feel free to do, to sign up for the Budget Committee. Parks and Tree Advisory Board, we have two openings. We have a couple renewed. One's leaving and one is not renewing. So there are a couple openings on that. And that's fun because you get to deal with the parks and ideas, trees around the city and in the parks and good ideas for the kiddos and something we can, how we can beautify Crestwell. So that's another important one. And the other big one is the Water Rate Advisory Board. We have two openings, possibly only one. I do believe we had one volunteer that said yes. He just has not committed yet. Caitlin, he didn't happen to email. Okay. He told me yes a couple different ways. But the Water Rate Advisory has a couple of counselors and it has citizens. So that way, when we do run up the rate, you guys have a say, not just the council. And I think that's a good way for you to get involved. And, you know, the biggest complaint in Crestwell is the water board, water rates. So that would be a great way to volunteer and be part of the solution. And that way we can have a dialogue and work together on this and make sure that we keep the water rates down to the best we can. And that is it on vacancies. We'll move to Correspondence, which we did not have any. And we'll go to number four. So Consent Calendar, has all the counselors been able to review the minutes? All items are considered routine and will be enacted or unless pulled for correction? So if everybody's had a chance to view, I don't need to pull. Okay. So I've entertained a motion to accept the minutes as presented. Counselor Carter, Kent?
I move that we accept the council meeting minutes as presented.
Do I have a second? Counselor Duke seconded. All is in favor? All opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. So we'll move to the Administrator Report. City Manager Maro Rowell, would you please take over, sir?
Absolutely. In your packet you have the bills for last month. Do you have any questions on any of the bills that we might be able to answer? And remember, we spend a lot of time trying to predict which ones you will ask us because we have a poll going on downstairs, so...
Counselor Kent?
Thank you. There was a few that were new to me that were high-ticket items. And I did a bunch of Googling and everything, and they all made sense based on what we were doing. The one thing that I wasn't able to particularly find, and I hope somebody wins this pool, is Trojan Technologies.
What page?
That is, check issue dates 10/9 through 10/9. Page 23 on the PDF.
And it was again what? I'm sorry?
Oh, Trojan Technologies, $11,363 and $0.78.
Yes, so that was for our SCADA system equipment programs. It's really for the wastewater and water systems. It's a program and system that allows, in industrial area allows different programs to talk to one another. So this is allowing, I think, the water system to talk to the tower, to let, to increase flows and things like that. We did have that one marked down, by the way, so thank you.
Anyone else? Okay.
Okay, next up, Lane County Sheriff's report. Sergeant Speldrick, come up.
Hello, everyone. October was kind of a cool month. We got to, you know, we got to break some doors down. We got to take some fugitives into custody from other states. Looking at calls for service, our property calls were way down for some reason. I ran the numbers about five times because I thought I was making a mistake. But we stayed really busy with our self-initiated activity. And you'll see that the vehicle category is up. And that is from self-initiated stops that led to DUI drivers. We had several of those that were self-initiated that I'm really proud of the guys for. It was just kind of a good month in Crestwell. We were pretty busy, but in a good way. And so I don't have a whole lot to comment on. The Measure 11 crime was another juvenile on juvenile crime that is being investigated by our detective section now. And if you look at the citation page, you'll see that we were, like I said, very proactive. Got out there and we were able to address some of the issues. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but that's all I've got.
Counselor?
I have one.
Judge Germs?
Is there any connection with these Measure 11? Because it's, what, the second month in a row that it's a younger one? Are they somehow connected or know each other or affiliate?
No, no, these are not the same kids. A lot of times what you see, especially when we have juvenile crimes, it's something that... So like last month's, for example, were very young juveniles. That case probably will not be prosecuted, but they will receive resources. This other case, I don't know what's going to happen with it at this point. But it's similar behavior that maybe goes a little too far, but they're not related in any way. I wish I could give you the details because it makes sense, but I can't.
I was just seeing if there was a pattern somewhere.
No. For lack of a better way to put it, kids do very silly things nowadays.
Anyone else? Counselor Xer?
Just one road clear question. The four speeding citations that were issued in October, do you know if any of them were in the school zones?
None of them were in the school zone that I recall. Yes, none of them were in the school zones.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
I'll give my time, Derek.
Normally, we don't take questions this time, Sheriff, from the audience.
But can I ask, I'd really like to ask a question.
It was a quick, it was a quick one. Go ahead.
How come I keep getting alert vandalism reports about Crestwell? What's going on, the burglaries and everything?
I have no idea why you're getting those alerts. That's not a sheriff's office thing.
I don't know where it's coming from, but it's talking about the vandalism that's going on. And I don't know why it's on my phone. Nobody else seems to. And also through my radio, I'm getting dispatching.
I, I couldn't tell you. It's not sheriff's office because sheriff's office is all encrypted. And so even if you had a scanner, you wouldn't be able to...
I don't have a scanner.
Well, I mean, using that as an example. I don't know why you're getting those. I don't know if that's an app that you have or... Because it's not something sent out by the sheriff's office.
Absolutely not.
All right, Counselors, anyone else? No? All right, thanks, Sergeant Speldrick. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Code Enforcement Report. I use this time to give you updates on the recruitment. We went through the interview process. We selected a candidate, offered the job, they accepted. The gentleman Pierre Michael Francia will be starting December 1st. So we were able to get through that process. It went very well. Very high qualified candidates. It was a difficult decision, but I... When he's here at a city council meeting, I'll make introductions. I think you should see him, know him, since he'll be out there representing us.
Awesome, great.
Then you... Oh, I'm sorry. I think I skipped over the city term. So you have that in your packet. It shows six hours accumulated for the past month. It's pretty well described. I don't know if you have any questions in addition to that.
Counselor?
Okay, next will be the building permit schedule that we had this past month. Any questions with that? All right. And then for my updates. So I wanted to give you a Second Street update again. So the concrete work and the asphalt work is completed. We really are down to two remaining items. The striping of the parking spaces and also the installation of the various signs that will go out in that area. We have a call in to get those done. We're hoping the signs get in hopefully within the next week. The striping is going to be air temperature dependent. And there can't really be a lot of ground moisture or the paint will just bleed out. So we're hoping for really good weather for that. But there's calls in to have the work done in those, while the last two remaining big items, then we can shut down the project for the year. So we've met our goal. I've also been working, visiting the different neighbors, working out really details on how the project interfaced their property and the work on their property. There'll be some work that we'll need to do that we couldn't take care of this fall, so we'll schedule for the spring. But the neighbors are aware of that and seem to be pretty satisfied with that piece. Logo and branding. So we have an internal logo committee that is looking at updating our city logo. And our thought process with that is to really come up with three different designs that represent Crestwell from, and that the employees have input on. And then that'll become a preferred logo through a, really an employee selection process. And then we'll bring that to you as well. But this is really an administrative effort to update our logo and to have it, I think, resonate a little bit more with staff and maybe the community. And then Metro Waste Management Commission. We are making really good progress. And I risk saying that out loud, but we're meeting this Friday with the commission to make a presentation about the project, to really get their essential buy-in so it could be moved along to the city of Eugene and the city of Springfield. We're working on dates to get in front of the council and the Lane County. Anywhere from December to January, we're looking to be able to meet with them and present our project. I included in my update, my weekly update, the fantastic work that Cliff did in working through some of the issues with DEQ. And we're able to get 10 EDU's equivalent dwelling unit connections. So we've increased that. So we are making, sometimes it feels like a snail's pace, but we are making progress. And I think our position with wanting to take a little bit more control over the project is beginning to resonate with Metro, Lane County, and most importantly, DEQ.
Awesome. Thank you, sir. All right, so I'll bring us item number six, Council Action Items, Public Hearing. Adoption Ordinance 574. Curtis, would you come up, please, sir?
Good evening, Council. So in front of you tonight is Ordnance 574. And that's an ordinance to amend the city's comprehensive planning goals for economic development as well as adopt the 2025 Economic Opportunities Analysis. So the Economic Opportunities Analysis is comprised of two general parts. There is a quantitative analysis as well as a qualitative portion. And the quantitative part, it looks at all the land in Crestwell. It looks at all the commercial and industrial lots. It counts them. And then it projects 20 years of growth. And so what we're taking an inventory of is how many vacant parcels do we have that are zone industrial, commercial? How many jobs are we expecting over the next 20 years? And do we have enough land? The second part is a more qualitative approach to try to put some color kind of behind all the numbers, all the data. And so we did this through a survey, two open houses that we held at the community center. And also through a technical advisory committee that met with us three times throughout the project. And the technical advisory committee was made up of a business owner's residence, the Chamber of Commerce, a couple of planning commissioners, and our public works director. And through the kind of qualitative analysis, we kind of reviewed some of the targeted industries in Crestwell. So what industries would we like to see in Crestwell? So these may be businesses that provide family wage jobs. And these also may be businesses that provide services that we would like to see in Crestwell. And then kind of beyond that, we kind of explored the comparative advantages and disadvantages that Crestwell has. And so obvious advantages, we're on I-5. We have incredible access to labor and goods and services. And so this EOA, so Economic Opportunities Analysis, this EOA was presented to Planning Commission at the April and August work sessions that we held in August, oh, sorry. We held a public hearing in October and Planning Commission recommended approval of the EOA, six to zero. So before I go, before I go any further to discuss the findings, are there any questions on the plan?
Counselor? We can go to New York session.
Okay, great. So there's a lot of information in the plan, so I want to highlight the key findings. A key finding is within the land capacity analysis, it shows that we have a surplus of land. We have enough of a land capacity to serve Crestwell's economic development for the next 20 years. There's a surplus of 50 acres of industrial lots and a surplus of nine acres of commercial lots. And so there is utility in that finding in the sense that if somebody comes forward with a zone change, the zone change industrial to commercial, we can say, "Well, we have more industrial land than we have commercial land." So kind of the first step in a zone change review is, okay, this kind of fits with our lands needs analysis. And then it goes into further detail. But... And then the second, I think, critical finding in this report is the connectivity of our water supply to our economic development. When we were discussing targeted industries at one of the technical advisory committees, we talked about fruit processing. That's a value-added agriculture business. It kind of fits within Crestwell. We're surrounded by agriculture land. It's a manufacturing-type job. It's a good job. Perhaps that would be good in Crestwell. Well, we only have so much water supply. And a fruit processing facility uses up a lot of water. And that would ultimately affect our ability to provide residences in the future. So we're not at a crisis mode right now, but this plan is starting to suggest that this is something that maybe not this council, but future councils will have to pay attention to. And then the third, I think this is the most critical finding, that there's a strong emphasis to make our industrial parcels shovel-ready. And so looking back in our 2005 EOA, there are 58 acres of commercial land in the surplus, and now we have nine. Whereas in the industrial lots, we had 41 acres in the 2005 plan, and now we have 50. So we've actually increased our surplus. And so kind of holding a lot of things equal, the biggest difference is that our industrial lands are not shovel-ready, whereas our commercial lands are shovel-ready. And by shovel-ready, I mean they have access to infrastructure, streets, water, sewer. And so a really wonderful thing is that in 2008, a city council decided to adopt an urban renewal plan. And an urban renewal plan is a tax increment financing tool that collects property taxes over our urban renewal district over time. And all of our industrial lands are included in this urban renewal district. And so the idea is that we collect money from the property tax... money from the property taxes, and then we can invest it in the infrastructure, and then that will spur development, and then we'll see an exponential increase in property tax and assessed value in our urban renewal district, and we'll see a positive return on investment. And so kind of from this stage moving forward, a plan is to master plan our industrial sites and kind of understand what specific land uses can bring back a positive return. So perhaps it may be a combination of industrial lands and commercial lands and mixed-use lands that are all kind of blended together to kind of bring back the most assessed value, system development charges, water rate fees, combinations of things that we want. And we kind of have to balance those land uses with the cost of serving them. So we have these uses now. What's the cost of the roadway, the sewer, the waterway to kind of make these parcels shovel-ready? And so this kind of master planning is part of the urban renewal plan strategy, and it kind of gets of, okay, if we're the city and we're going to invest $3 million on the site, how do we guarantee some level of confidence that we will receive a positive benefit in 10 years' time? And so the idea is that if a resident, like somebody here in the crowd, says, Mayor, Council, why did we invest $3 million on this project? The answer is, well, we're very likely to see a $5 million return in 10 years' times. That's a 40%, no, that's a significant return. Forgive me for not doing the math on this, but... So by adopting this ordinance or by approving this ordinance, it also replaces the comprehensive plan goals and kind of refreshes the 2005 goals around land need, infrastructure, and just our general entrepreneurship goals. Any questions?
John?
Counselor Moore. I have a question about the vacant memory care assisted living campus over there that seemed to be going great guns, and then they left. Is there any information about that? They would generate a lot of jobs if they had opened.
Yeah, my information is pretty identical to what you can find online, that there was some cash flow and the cash flow stopped.
Since that's their main objective.
It's part of it, yeah, yeah.
Counselor Moore.
All right, so this is going to be a multiple question. So first off, you were talking about lot sizes, and we're talking about our water supply. All right, we only have so many connections to be able to do this. So in your opinion, we can't really, can we bring a business in housing at the same time underneath our current state, or will we wait until after our connection, if we do get connected? Is, what are we looking at?
You're referring to Short Mountain, right? If we get connected to Short Mountain?
Yeah.
It depends on the development. So we've kind of been, as applications come forward or as pre-applications come forward, we'll require that all businesses present some sort of water use plan. And so how many gallons per day are they using? Our current metric is every 300 gallons per day equals one equivalent dwelling unit. And generally, businesses use more water than residential units. So a lot of this plan is kind of being methodical of like, how do we arrange the site in a way that can be useful come 2031, when we're really online with our wastewater situation?
Okay, so are you saying that we're going to have to be stagnant with our business coming in if we need to?
We'll be very slow, yes.
Counselor Duke?
You said a little bit ago about the taxing and how to pay this. Can you repeat what you said about that part?
So the urban renewal district and how, so urban renewal district, it's the financing underneath it is tax increment financing. I might lean on Jim to tell, because I can describe it, but he's the finance director. Why would I?
Sure. All right, tax increment finance, urban renewals. Essentially, when the urban renewal is adopted, the assessors set a base level of assessment for the area. And then for every increase, percentage increase in those assessed values, that assessed value at the tax rate for all the districts involved, so not just the city's taxes, but the fire department's taxes, the library's taxes, go into the urban renewal. And then the city can borrow money to finance capital projects that are in the urban renewal plan and pay it back with that future tax base. And it grows exponentially. There's at least 3% per year, as we know, thanks to Oregon Measure 5, the assessed value is going to increase 3%, but even more so if there's development. So it's a pretty powerful tool. Does that answer your question?
Somewhat, yeah. I probably might have a little bit more for you.
Yeah, so once the urban renewal is closed, then the taxes go back to the other districts in the future. But the general concept is we've raised the tax base through development.
To clarify, urban renewal is already passed. We've already passed that. That's already happening. So what we're doing is taking a more proactive approach on trying to use that tax money to get development in Crestwell to create more jobs faster, quicker, rather than being reactive.
Correct. Yeah, the urban renewal plan was adopted in 2018 with the consensus that we need to invest in ourselves, invest in infrastructure. And so urban renewal can be structured a couple of different ways. Some can be for building facade improvements, some can be for street scape improvements. Ours is for infrastructure improvements.
Would that bring in foster farms? Like, some of the urban renewal will bring in properties like foster farms into the city limits, will not?
The district right now is set in its 2018 boundary, and so any boundary change would require a decision by council. And foster farms isn't contiguous to the boundary right now, so probably not.
Anyone else? No? All right, if nobody else has got anything, we're going to have a one-minute public hearing, which allows any of you to come up to the podium and ask any questions or speak your mind. Go ahead and start the open hearing right now.
Sherewaltin, 149 South Second Street, Crestwell. With this planning, renew, getting industry, you talk about commercial, you talk about water, taxes, property taxes. What does it do to the residential? Because we are part of this town. And do you have a cap that you're going to put on how much we're going to be paying for water? Or are you going to leave it wide open, where you can constantly raise it, you're not lowering it?
It's a multi-part question. I don't think I have the ability to answer. Jim, can you please speak to that?
Yeah, excellent questions, Sher. The property taxes are, the urban renewal district is, I don't believe it has residential property in it. No, it's the industrial areas north and south of Oregon Avenue along... Oh, and downtown is included, yeah. As far as the water rates, the charter kind of dictates water rates, I believe, Chapter 47.
Water advisory board would dictate that, water.
Right, we have to cover the costs of whatever the water costs the city.
If I'm correct, that didn't go up at all?
Actually, it went down 5%, 5%, yeah.
Did that answer all of them? I thought you had three there.
So we are residents. We are what you call a commercial district. Our homes are residential. So if it's not residential, so and it affects commercial, does that affect us?
Second Street specifically?
Sure.
Because you are, some of you are residential and commercial, allegedly.
Yeah, just to clarify, with urban renewal district, the tax rate does not go up, so you're not paying any more taxes. It's just the taxes, instead of going to these other districts, go to the urban renewal. And the buy-in from like the fire district and the library district, for example, would be they expect the property tax value, not the rate, but just the value of the properties, to go up due to investment, like companies coming to Crestwell and building facilities. It wouldn't have anything to do with your personal property.
That'll close the open hearing. Kaylin, would you mind reading the title twice for me?
Ordinance number 574, an ordinance mending the city of Crestwell's comprehensive land use plan and adopting the 2025 Economic Opportunity Analysis. First time. Ordinance number 574, an ordinance mending the city of Crestwell's comprehensive land use plan and adopting the 2025 Economic Opportunity Analysis.
Thank you. So now I'll be entertaining a motion. Counselor Stewart?
I move that the city council adopt ordinance 574, an ordinance amending the Crestwell comprehensive plan and adopting the 2025 Economic Opportunity Analysis.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Counselor Moore seconds it. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Is there any further discussion? Thank you. Counselor Kent?
I just want to give kudos to the planning committee. I thought the Economic Opportunity Analysis was an amazing document full of great information. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, now I'll be entertaining a motion in a second. So all those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign, motion passing unanimously. It's Counselor Moore missing. Move on to 6B, adoption ordinance of 575. Finance Director, Mr. Piper.
Thank you, Mayor, city councilors. Ordinance 575 is an ordinance will grant a non-exclusive franchise agreement to Pacific Corp. Doing business is specific power within the city limits of Crestwell. Back in January 2024, Pacific Corp. approached the city to renew its franchise agreement. City staff and the city attorney along have been negotiating with Pacific Corp. staff and their attorney to come to the final agreement that is before the city council for consideration. As discussed, the work session, the last work session, the city council charges all franchisees 5% of gross revenue. It's pretty standardized. Electric utilities are required by law to absorb 3.5% of that and kind of pass on the additional 1.5% of that to the consumer. That's why we've kind of shied away from increasing the franchise fee. The, there was a question at the last meeting about could it go down? That's a possibility. However, who's to say that the utility bill would go down? It would just be the franchise fee negotiated by the city. This franchise is consistent with provisions and other franchise agreements with the city and the electric utility providers. And the public works director, Clip Blue, was very helpful in reviewing and making sure that anything that would affect public works department construction right away was all covered within the agreement. And those were all addressed by the city and incorporated in this agreement. Staff, would you like to answer any questions, if there are any, on this agreement?
Does anybody have a question? No, with this approval covered it.
Thank you.
Thank you. So entertaining a motion. We're at the public hearing. Or can you read the title twice? Please.
Ordinance number 575, an ordinance granting an electric utility franchise to Pacific Corp. Ordinance number 575, an ordinance granting an electric utility franchise to Pacific Corp.
I'm entertaining a motion. Counselor Morris?
This'll sound just like what she just said. I move that the city council adopt ordinance 575, an ordinance granting an electric utility franchise to Pacific Corp.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Counselor Duke seconds it. Any further discussion or comment? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign, motion passing unanimously. Move on to 6C, council approval to award the North Taxi Land Improvement Project, Shelley Humble.
Good evening, councilors, mayor. Before you, it's exciting. This has been, what, four years in the making. We're finally able to go out to bid for the North Taxi Lane project. Windrose is the lowest bid, so for you tonight is a request for approval of Windrose excavation to allow city manager, Mr. Mozzarella, to sign the contract so that we can start it in the spring or summer, early spring, late spring, early summer. Any questions?
With this taxi lane, should this allow us to land bigger planes?
No, this is for, this is the first step. It's the infrastructure to build hangars.
Okay. Then bigger planes.
Then the taxiway project, which has been bumped by the FAA for a year. So during that process, we will work on the extension of the 500 feet.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm entertaining a motion. Counselor Kramer?
I move to award the contract for the Crestwell Airport hopping field, Lord Taxi Lane improvements to Windrose excavation and Thor Tides, City Manager, Vincent Moro, Mor Dor Pelleo, to enter into contract with the Windrose evacuation.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Counselor Duke seconds it. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign, motion passing unanimously. All right, that moves us on to number seven, which is the executive session. So the city council now be entering into executive session, which is held pursuant for S192.6602I to review and evaluate the employment-related performance of the chief executive officer and any public body, a public officer, employee, or staff member who does not request an open hearing. It will be the city attorney and municipal judge. With that, we'll close this hearing. With that, we'll close this hearing.
All right, we have to stop the executive session. We are now going to remind everybody for upcoming events, please review the city website, look at the calendar for anything fun and exciting, and again, look at the committees and what you might want to be a part of. We are out.
Good to see you, man.
Good to see you too.
All right, we have to stop the executive session. We are now going to remind everybody for upcoming events, please review the city website, look at the calendar for anything fun and exciting, and again, look at the committees and what you might want to be a part of. We are out.
Good to see you, man.
Good to see you too.